Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back. So good to see your smiling faces all over the room. It's it's good to be back. So we're ready to get started with our first meeting for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. And.
Madam Chair, I move that we reconvene in open session and adopt certification of closed session.
Second.
If it has been moved in second that we reconvene to open session adjourned certification at closed session?
Whereas the Dinwiddie County School Board has convened a closed session on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas paragraph two point two dash three seven one two of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dinwiddie County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board. Dr. Elaine J. Pearson, District One.
I certify.
Duane G. Walker, District Two.
I certify.
Barbara T. Pittman, District Three.
I certify.
Mary M. Benjamin, District Four.
I certify.
Madam Chair, all members certify.
Thank you. I ask you now if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the amend um approve the agenda.
Are there any are there any amendments? Madam Secretary then?
No ma'am.
I I'd move that we approve the agenda adopted for tonight.
I second.
It has been moved in second that we adopt the agenda as presented. All of those in favor?
Aye.
None, no nays. It's accepted. Closed session report approved personnel approval.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the personnel list as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the personnel list. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The list is approved. Dr. Weston?
Yes, I'd like to reintroduce a couple of familiar faces to you this evening. As they're sitting in new roles for the upcoming school year. At first, I would like to introduce to you Ms. Kimberly Bailey. Can you stand please? Ms. Bailey. Ms. Bailey is the new principal at Dinwiddie High School. Mrs. Bailey comes to us, she had an associate's degree from Richard Bland. And she has a bachelor's degree from Virginia Commonwealth University. And her master's degree is from Central Michigan University. She has served both as a special ed teacher. And then for about seven years, she was a an assistant principal. And she left us for a moment when she had a lapse in judgment and moved to a neighboring school district. And we were able to get her to come back home to serve here because this is where this is where she's supposed to be. And now she is the new principal at the Dinwiddie High School. I should tell you that she graduated in class of ninety nineteen ninety-seven. And you know, I firmly believe she does indeed believe Navy. There's nobody that is a bigger cheerleader for Dinwiddie High School than than Ms. Bailey. So we're so happy that you're serving in this capacity. Congratulations. The other family.
She has her husband.
Yes, we oh, you have your family with you this evening? We have two roles of family on this yes. That's.
My husband, who I could not do this work.
Yes.
Being by my side. Would like to introduce my daughter. She's with me, she's a two thousand and twenty-five graduate. My son will be twenty twenty-seven. My sister nineteen ninety-two graduate. My brother-in-law nineteen ninety-five graduate.
Wow.
My niece twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
My father nineteen seventy-one Dinwiddie High School graduate.
Wow.
My niece, right back here, she's being shot. A two thousand and thirty-five graduate.
Wow.
My nephew will be a two thousand and twenty-seven.
Wow.
My stepmom is here. She's not a graduate.
Oh. By proxy, she she really is though.
My brother is back here as a two thousand and eight graduate. And his wife, my sister-in-law is here too. So we marry outside of graduates. But then, you know, our children become graduates.
Absolutely, well, thank you, Samantha, that's awesome.
I appreciate this opportunity to serve the community in Dinwiddie High School.
Thank you for saying yes, we're so happy. Another familiar face for you, Mr. Robbie Garns. If you could stand up, please, sir. Mr. Robbie Garns is the new director of student, he likes to say Student Support Services because he wants to make sure that that's the main emphasis in his work. And Mr. Garns, he has this Bachelor of Arts, he was an English teacher. And then he has a Master's of Art that he received from Virginia Tech. We'll try not to hold that against you, although this is Virginia Tech country around here. And he served as an assist, he was an English teacher first and foremost at several different districts in Henrico, in Chesterfield, and Birdie County, I believe. And then he also served in Louisa as an assistant principal before we were able to lure him over here. And he worked here for us as an assistant principal. And for the past six years, he's served at the helm of Dinwiddie High School and has done an amazing job in that role. So much so, this is what happens when you do a great job. Here come more responsibilities for you. So now he's taken on the role of the director. Mr. Garns comes to us with a number of accolades. He was, when he was a teacher, he was the new Teacher of the Year for Henrico Public Schools. He's part of the who's who among all the teachers and I think all the teachers in the world. As far as I'm concerned, anyway. And so he has quite an impressive background. And we're just so happy that he's agreed to to take on this new role because he's going to do amazing things in this capacity with our young people and has already hit the ground running. So congratulations to you, Mr. Garns. I will say too that Mr. Garns is working on his doctorate. So he will he will very, very soon and be Dr. Garns. And so thank you so much and congratulations to you. I feel like we should introduce Dr. Walker because she is your family, part of your family, right? We always say Pastor and First Lady. That's what I call him, Pastor and First Lady, in place of yes. So thank you so much, Ms. Benjamin.
Thank you, Dr. Weston, and congratulations to the both of you. Approval of student matters?
Madam Chair, I move that we honor the parent request and release from compulsory attendance student number R E L zero eight slash two five dash one for religious reasons.
It has been moved in second that students number R E L oh eight. Start at two five two.
It's two five dash one.
Dash one.
Two five dash one. Just one. Be remove be accept the parents' requests for release from school attendance based on religious exemption. All of those in favor use the usual sign.
Aye.
So the motion is. Oh, okay, all those in favor, use aye, right?
Yeah, we did aye. Yes.
Next one?
Madam Chair, I also make a motion that we honor the parent request and release from compulsory attendance student number zero eight slash two five dash eight.
Second.
Is that right, Ms. Rainey? Is it dash eight?
Okay.
It has been moved in second that student number R E L oh eight slash two five dash eight be accept the parents' request and release student from compulsory school attendance based on religious exemption. All those in favor use the usual sign.
Aye.
The motion is accepted. Next.
Madam Chair, I move that we honor the parents' request to release from compulsory attendance students R E L dash oh eight slash twenty-five dash two dash three and dash four.
Second.
It has been moved in second that students number R E L dash oh eight slash two five dash two. R E L dash oh eight slash two five dash three. R E L dash oh eight slash two five dash four. That we honor the parents' request and release the student from the students from compulsory school attendance based on religious exemption. All those in favor use the usual sign.
Aye.
Okay, it's accepted, the next one?
Madam Chair, I move that we honor the parents' request to release from compulsory school attendance students number R E L dash oh eight slash two five dash five. R E L dash oh eight slash two five dash six. And R E L dash oh eight slash two five dash seven.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we honor the parents' request and release student students compulsory school attendance based on religious exemption. All those in favor use the usual sign.
Aye.
The motion is carried. That's that's it. Okay. Recognitions?
Now we got expenditure reports.
I missed expenditure expenditure report.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the expenditure reports that have been presented tonight.
A second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the expenditures report as as given. We'll do a roll call on the motion.
Elaine J. Pearson?
Aye.
Duane G. Walker?
Aye.
Barbara T. Pittman?
Aye.
Mary M. Benjamin?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from June tenth, twenty twenty-five, and June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we approve the minutes from June tenth, twenty twenty-five, and June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Chair, I re. Madam Secretary, I request a roll call vote on this motion.
Dr. Elaine J. Pearson?
Yes, on June tenth, twenty twenty-five. Obstained for June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, as I was not present.
Duane G. Walker?
Yes, for both.
Barbara T. Pittman?
Yes, for both.
Mary M. Benjamin?
Yes, for both. All the members have voted and it is passed. Is that it? That's it, recognitions?
Yes, ma'am. Going to bring to you this evening about what Smart Work's been happening over the summer with our work-based learning students.
There we go.
There you go.
Good afternoon, members of the board and Dr. Weston. I'm just here today to introduce to you your net Nicholas. She is the Workforce Development Manager here with Dinwiddie County. And she was overseeing the Summer Work-Based Learning Program and she can give you all the highlights. And I believe we have two student workers here today to also give you a presentation on how well their summer went.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Weston, thank you so much for this opportunity. This is the first time, hopefully this will be something we can continue to do moving forward. So I am newly appointed to my position. I say new because I just made it to my year mark in June. But our Summer Work-Based Learning Program is something that we do annually. It usually runs from June through the end of July. And we think the school, because you guys have a number of people who participate. And special thing goes to Ms. Clary, who was making sure that we found placements for our students. So this year, we had Dinwiddie Elementary to participate. We had the school board office, we had Nutrition Department, high school, and the middle school. We had thirty-one students that participated in the program and all thirty-one completed it. They all completed the fir the full eight weeks. They have an option to do either four or eight, but they all continued throughout the whole program. And they also completed the program by participating in one of our activities, which was a reality store. And it for some of our students, it gave them a little insight on what parents go through in regards to making decisions on how much they pay. And some of the students that I have standing to my left were very funny about determining whether or not they would get an Android or an iPhone if they had to pay for it out of their own pocket. So I think that the activity definitely did what it was supposed to do. But I would like to yield now for those two students to give you a presentation of their experience during the program. So we have Ms. Lauren Williams as stated, and we also have Ms. Kimari Yorani. And they will tell you where they were placed and what that experience was like.
Hello. My name is Lauren Williams. Do I need to click? Okay.
You just tell me when.
Okay. I go to Dinwiddie High School and I am a rising tenth grader. I am in FBLA, SCA, DECA, Pearl's, Rack, and Jero TC. In the future, I would like to attend college at North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University and become an entrepreneur when I come out. My placement, I was placed with Dinwiddie Public Schools Nutrition Department. A school nutrition department plays a vital role in providing healthy nutritious meals to students. Their responsibilities include meal planning, food preparation, nutritional education, compliance and regulation, budget management, community engagement, special dietary needs, and feedback and improvement. With the nutrition department, I did so many different projects and saw so many different sides of Dinwiddie. My first project was making a potato bar for a meeting that was held at the school board office. The day before we went out, I did shopping and prepared for the event. I noticed that this department deals with a lot of math and measurements. The day of, I helped season the food and prepare the setup. My next project was the kindergarten countdown. This was my first time serving to children and adults. I did the beautiful setup, as you can see in the picture, and this was one of my favorite projects. My last project was engaging with the community. I made bags full of food and the staff and I went to hand them out to families in need. This was also a pickup where you could come to the school and get the bags loaded up into your car. We ended up serving thirty-seven thousand and eleven meals over the summer. This had to be my favorite out of them all. My takeaway, working with the nutrition department at my school taught me the importance of balancing health, efficiency, and community needs when it comes to providing meals. I learned how much planning and teamwork go into creating menus that meet nutritional guidelines while still appealing to the students. I gained a better understanding of food safety, proportional control, and how dietary restrictions are accommodated to ensure every student has access to healthy options. Most importantly, I saw how the department plays a key role in fostering a positive school environment by promoting wellness and making healthy eating both accessible and enjoyable. These are my references, my supervisor, Marion Elder, my teacher, Kimberly Rozell, and one of the SWBL participants, Keniza Robinson. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
My name is Kimari Yorani. I attend to Dinwiddie High School and I am sixteen years old and a rising junior for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. I am involved with DECA, FBLA, and Sage. And in the future, I would love to attend Georgia Tech and pursue my dream career in programming mechanics. A little bit about my placement, during the summer, I worked for Dinwiddie County Public Schools Technology Department. My role there was an IT technician. My job was to make sure computers were in the working condition and were ready for use. I also had the opportunity to attend onboarding meetings every Wednesday. These meetings were acquired to help new employees, acting teachers, with their computers, accounts, and work badges. These pictures show a little bit of what I was doing while I was working. So while you're there, you're just working on computers for all Dinwiddie Public Schools and making sure everything is up to good use and that they're ready for the school year. These are my references, Doris Quinn, my boss, that I have been working with for three years, and Kimberly Rozell, and Lauren Williams. Thank you so much.
Thank you, young ladies, for making your presentation this this afternoon. And I believe you really did learn something. Yes, so we'll be coming back to you for some things because I need some answers. So I appreciate all of those, all of your references also. We're going to move on, board matters?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Benjamin, we have a field trip, I believe Archie's going to come forward.
Good afternoon, how's everybody?
Good afternoon.
The field trip today is for the National FFA Convention, being held in Indianapolis, Indiana. It is routinely held there. The dates we're looking for going is October twenty-eighth through November first. All three FFA advisors will be on the trip. There, they get to, you know, compete with the at the national level, participate in career shows, various agricultural companies and colleges, and they also attend the agricultural tour on the National Days of Service while on the trip. Substitute's going to be required for four days for all three FFA advisors. The cost of the students is approximately nine hundred dollars, that includes the flight, the hotel, the food. Students will be responsible for all work missed and they'll be required to obtain as much of their work as possible to take with them so they do not fall behind. Study times will be established by the advisors while there. Trip will allow many cultural and personal experiences for those attending. Students will be conducting various fundraisers to offset their trip expenditure.
Are they flying?
Yes, they'll fly.
Flying?
Yeah, that's why it's on this trip so they can or on this board meeting so they can get going, looking at flights, figuring out exactly when, where, and how much.
How many people are going?
Three advisors and looking at twelve to eighteen, depending on who, one is allowed to go and two, you know, it's the higher ranking officers and the higher ranking members of the FFA.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Dinwiddie High School National FFA Convention Field Trip.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we approve the the FFA field trip. All of those in favor use the usual sign.
Aye.
As have it and it's approved, thank you.
Thank you, welcome back.
Mr. Walters is going to come and talk to you all about the crisis management plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Each year, we come we come before y'all in accordance with the Code of Virginia. You can read there twenty-two point one two seventy-nine point eight that requires that the school board looks at and approves the crisis guide prior to Dr. Weston signing her certification of that guide. I did send this out to you in advance. There is some person, there's some people's personal information in there, so let's not. Yeah, okay. That has personal cell phones and things like that in a convenient emergency. But I did get some feedback from the board, I did correct those things. We had some a couple corrections we needed to make with all the personnel changes and everything. But I'm just before you today to ask that you, if you have any questions, first of all, and then ask that you approve this crisis guide.
Do we, just a question down, do we each year, is it part of our preschool training to to review this with the staff each time?
What we, the way it works is the the school guide is in correlation with this guide. This is a division-level guide. So the the principals all turn it into me, I over look over them and make sure they have the required information. And then they review their their school guide with their staff, yes, ma'am. And then this, a copy of this, once once it's approved, a copy of this will go to each principal so they have it and so they know what's going on at the division level. It's also distributed to the Health Department, Fire and EMS, Sheriff's Department, and all of the emergency responders so that everybody's on the same page. We took hours about three years ago and we adapted it close more closely to the Crisis Management Manual that the county uses for their Fire and EMS and their emergency services. It just made more sense because that's nine times out of ten who are going to be working in coordinates when. So the short answer, Ms. Pittman, is yes.
I'm glad to see you have it to this point. Been working on it for a while, you know, trying to get it to this point. Are there any other questions for?
No, I just want to thank everybody who's served on this committee for all the hard work because this is very technical and involved stuff. And having served on many of these different committees, I really appreciate the effort you put into this.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the crisis management plan that Mr. Walters has presented this evening.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we approve the crisis management plan that Mr. Wa Walters has brought to us. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Use the sign, aye?
Jumped it, aye.
Aye.
Thank you, once it's been signed, you'll also get a copy of this electronically.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. The next part, Ms. Benjamin, is the policy updates that were presented back in February of twenty twenty-five, I believe. Did you hear something, Mrs.?
School nutrition.
Yeah, school nutrition.
Oh, yes.
It's not online.
School nutrition.
Oh, excuse me, I am so sorry. It's not on, school nutrition. Thank you so much. I have two separate ones, so thank you. She was moving, so I knew something was happening over there. So thank you, Ms. Alder, for your.
Thank you, you're welcome. Good afternoon, Chair, vice chair, board members, Dr. Weston. I'm here to present the co-op bids. We are a member of the.
We are a member of the Southside Co-op and we have opted to roll over our food, food supply items, ice cream and milk bids for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The vendors supplying these services include RRS Food Service, Freezing Point LLC for our fruit smoothies, Hershey's Ice Cream, Pat Dairy, and Smart Mouth Pizza. The co-op issued a new request for proposal this year for fruit smoothie mix, and this proposal was awarded to Freezing Point LLC. The co-op also issued a request for proposal this year for paper products and chemical products. The vendors supplying these items are Riverside Paper and Brady Plus for the chemicals. We are also members of the Southside Sanitation and Safety Co-op since two thousand twenty-one. And our division, this is also a part of the Southside Co-op. And this contract, RFP, was for cleaning supplies for the nutrition department. We are also requesting permission to continue the use of cooperative purchasing with Greensville County for the Coca-Cola products. The estimated total for food and food supplies and chemicals for twenty-five, twenty-six is estimated two million dollars. If any questions?
So we have a cluster of different companies within the bid?
Yes, ma'am.
And they're similar to before?
Yes, same ones. Only different one is Freezing Point. We had tried beverage before, but they went out of business. And that was one of the students' favorites of the slushies, so we went off a beer so we can keep that item for the students. And it's a hundred percent fruit juice.
Madam Chair, I, I move that we approve the bid for the co-ops for the twenty-five, twenty-six Nutrition Department.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the school nutrition bids for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. All those in favor, use the usual sign.
Aye.
As have it. And you have another one?
Yes, ma'am. One more. Back on July twenty-first, we issued an RFP to supply produce, vegetables, and fruit for our school system, and we received three responses. The response, however, we issued it. It was prepared with cooperative language, allowing any district in the Southside Co-op to use the chosen vendor if they wish. The proposed bid is for one year with an opportunity for them to roll over for four additional years based on performance and quality. Out of the three vendors who responded, it was decided that Rudy's Exotic Mushrooms could supply the quality and quantity that we would need to maintain our high quality of standard and nutrition for our students. The annual estimated total will be a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. It is recommended that we award Rudy's Exotic Mushrooms for an initial one-year period, July twen- July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, with an option to renew for an additional four years. Estimated amount to approve the entire five-year period is six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And that also includes the items that we use for our fresh food and vegetable program.
So are we awarding a contract for one year or the five years?
One, but the option to move for four. Four mostly be five total. Yes, ma'am. So if they don't do what we asked, then we can revisit. And if the quality of the items we need.
She has the option after one year to renew.
Yes, ma'am. We can renew.
Did you use any of the fruit? I see July first that you start using.
No, ma'am. We haven't used it yet. Yes.
We have to approve the contract first. But did you use them last year?
These are the same ones that we used in the past with the individual items. Another student favorites.
And they, okay. Any other question for Ms. Elder?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the school nutrition produce and fruit bid as presented for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
It has moved in second that we accept the school nutrition produce and fruit. Bid for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. All those in favor use the usual sign.
Aye.
It's approved and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now policy updates. Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. We provided you, well, they actually came out in February of this year, and then we provided another copy of the policy updates. We're asking for your approval now that you've had some time to take a look at them. Most of the policy updates have to do with change in code or some changes to wording. There were a couple of policies that had to be updated annually and no changes were made, but we just had to show that we were, we were looking at it annually, reviewing it. And then there were a couple also that we did actually change some wording in the policy itself to be more in line with the law. So we're asking for your approval of these policies.
And I think in some wording, it was, where it was redundant, we had, we just eliminated.
Some of it we just, yes.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the policy updates that have been presented. Second.
It has been moved in second that we approve the policy updates. All of those in favor use the sign aye.
Aye.
So the updates approved. Dr. Weston?
Thank you. I just wanted to provide you with an update as to where we are with enrollment. Currently, the good news is that we are above our budgeted amount. And so they are coming. So now we just are all very hopeful that everyone that has signed up to come and is signing up to come will show up on the first day. We do, are watching a couple of the class sizes at some of our schools. We have until September thirtieth to get all those to level out. So we'll see what happens the first ten days or so of school and come back to you in September and let you know exactly where we are with students. But the good news is that we are above our budgeted amount currently.
That's good news.
That's wonderful. That's, that's wonderful news. Yes, ma'am.
Now you have policy updates?
Yes, and so we just know that you just finished those policies and now we have some more policies for you to review. Actually, this notebook is a little thicker than the one you had previously, so it might take you a little longer to go through. But there are a number of policies that are there for your review. And we'll be coming back to you at a later date and asking for your approval. And whatever time you need to have in order to review those policies. It's okay.
Is that, that's it for that?
Yes, ma'am. That's all we have is just to let on record as being this will be the first reading of those policies and how, how long that the board needs.
Okay. Madam Secretary, are there any citizens comments?
No one has signed up to speak tonight, Madam Chair.
Board member comments?
I just want to thank the students who participated in the summer work program for coming in and showing us what you did this summer and letting us know that you actually gained something other than a little bit of money. Thank you so much.
I, I want to acknowledge that this time of year is always kind of a mixed bag of emotions, I think, because it's the mystery of a new year, but also the excitement of a clean slate. And so it's always kind of. I think it's a strange feeling that you have at this time of year. But in the midst of all that, I, I want to acknowledge that there are sometimes changes that happen that we don't want. And there are people that aren't in the room, that were in the room the last time we were here, and those changes are hard. And I saw firsthand over the last few weeks what an amazing place Dinwiddie County is. And we'll get through the, these kinds of changes together because of the people in Dinwiddie. But at the same time, I, I just, I just want to acknowledge that it's not easy. And so we're, we're in this together. We're, we're supporting one another and I just want you to know that it's a new year and we'll get through it, but it won't always be easy, so.
Thank you all for, for coming. And thank you, Mr. Walker, for what you said. And I want you to know that we have attended a few things too, that young ladies, we did a few things this summer too. We attended a conference on education, the Welcome Back Breakfast, the Back to School Bash, and also the IDPS. I think I saw you two out there. We had that awesome speaker. And also on yesterday, we did some rounds with the faith-based, or what we call the pastors' round table. We did a few stops with them on yesterday. So we continue to uplift and be here for each other and we, and we have each other's back. Dr. Weston?
Yes, I would echo that. I, I would like to start by saying that I'm very grateful for the partnership we have with Dinwiddie County. It, it is nice to, to live and serve in a community that we all have the same mission. And that is to remain mindful that it is about young people. And so thank you so much, Nanette, for your service and your leadership. It's, it's just, it's just great, the work that you continue to do and lean in for our young people. She does a lot of things, so I'm not sure how, she's on every committee, every, you know, so she does a lot of things. I'd like to thank the IDCPS Planning Committee under the leadership of Betty Spires. It was another phenomenal conference, a two-day conference, and it, it was ama- it was amazing. And I just want to thank you for everything, all the work that the team put in. I know you don't like to take credit for things, so. But I just really appreciate all the work that went into making that such a success for everybody. It was truly a great time for us all to come together, so thank you so much for that. The Back to School Bash, I told Natania the other night that she was the goat. Because she really did, it was, it was, it was a great event. And every year it just keeps getting better and better and just, you know, so appreciative of her leadership and her being able to pull all that together. And everybody that came out to support that and to support our young people is really quite awesome. And then also the pastoral round table. You know, we have a, it's a great group of individuals and, you know, they went around to each of the schools yesterday. And we're just so grateful for their service and their support of our young people in our schools. And I'm just, we are truly a community like none, none other, and this is a community. We do call it the Dinwiddie Difference. It is, it's a very different kind of community that does rally around people and one another, and I'm just so grateful to be a part of that.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. Any other comments in addition to anything, board members? Well, I'll entertain the motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the meeting is now adjourned.